Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Patty, would you do roll call, please?
Haley.
Here.
Plumish.
Here.
Swenson.
Here.
Katerine.
Here.
Here. Item number three, does anyone have a reason to abstain for a financial or a non-financial conflict of interest?
No.
No.
Do not?
No.
No. Approval of the agenda, are there any additions or deletions of the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries, agenda is approved. Public comment.
There was one on there, Zane Williams, but I don't see him here.
I think that was from Saturday, if I remember right. Would anyone in the audience like to make a public comment? All right, public comment is closed. Moving on, item number five, approval of minutes from February 18th, 2020.
I got a question or a comment or complaint. Down in the miscellaneous, where it says that, I think it's page three, where we got paid to go to the ditch board meeting in Meckling, and all of us that were there got paid, well, I get paid $42.64, and I guess I don't feel right taking that much money to drive 15 miles. I get paid by the month like all the rest of us, and I got a check here that I don't feel good about keeping. I told Patty to give it to the women's shelter, but they couldn't do that, so I'm not going to cash it. And I'm not going to use it, so I'm going to tear it up, because I think that's too much money to drive 15 miles each way. And maybe we should look at some of our other expenses if, I don't know how it's set up, I didn't apply for it either, so.
That's also for the meeting and mileage.
Yeah, like I said, I get paid by the month, so anyway.
Could you give me that back then, Gary?
What?
Can you give me that back then?
Sure.
You know, Gary, there is ways to save money. I rode with Gary in a county vehicle, so that we saved, well, it was like $30 we saved in mileage. So driving together with other people, then you don't get reimbursed mileage. That's some of the other things we could do to cut costs.
Yeah, so if, like I said, you know, Don, he needed $300 to go to Pierre, which I understand that, but I don't need $42 to drive to Meckling, so anyway. You want that back, that's fine.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented, further discussion. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Aye.
Motion carries, minutes are approved. Moving on to item number six, Citizen of the Year Award. I will read the resolution for Howard and Jane Gilmore. Be it resolved that the Yankton County Commission congratulates Howard and Jane Gilmore as 2019 Yankton Citizens of the Year, whereas the Yankton County Board of Commissioners appreciates the dedication and hard work of Howard and Jane and others in Yankton County, and whereas the Yankton County Board of Commissioners commend Howard and Jane for their spirit of service and identify their commitment to continuance and growth of a healthy community. Dr. Gilmore's dedicated service in providing regional medical care was recognized with the 1990 South Dakota Perinatal Association Pioneer Award for the work on the reservations, a distinctive honor shared with Sister Blanche Cribble. He also earned the 1999 Anton Hayden Distinguished Professional Professor Award from the University of South Dakota Sanford School of Medicine. And whereas Jane, as a homemaker, proud mother of four children, and loyal community servant, dedicated her life to serving youth, she also volunteered with Yankton County 4H for 15 years, and for 18 years she served as a Sunday School teacher at United Methodist Church. And whereas together, the Gilmores cared for diverse populations, especially those in greatest need on nearby reservations. They served Habitat for Humanity, participating in former United States President Jimmy Carter's building blitz at Eagle Butte, helped to organize fundraising, rummage sales, and as well as participated in the Habitat 500 Mile Bike Ride for 20 years. They both were math tutors at Yankton Middle School, where Jane volunteered nearly 12 hours each week for 21 years, and Howard volunteered for six years. And whereas the Yankton County Board of Commissioners identify the strength of the future will depend on those committed to selfless service to others, as exemplified by Howard and Jane, and whereas Howard and Jane represent the strong family values and spirit of service to neighbors that Yankton County promotes. Now, therefore, be it resolved, whereas the Yankton County Commission declares Howard and Jane Gilmore Day in our great Yankton County, declared by Yankton County Commission dated this 15th day of March 2020 in Yankton, South Dakota. Any discussion, we will need a motion to approve this.
Move approval.
Oh, we don't? We don't need a motion? Oh, okay, well.
Should the date be, I know you're presenting it on the 15th, but do we need to have the date as we approve it, or?
Well, we don't have to approve it, but I do want to say Tom and Jane is how I know them, and they are neighbors of mine, they live just south of us, and my boys were in middle school and benefited from the tutoring that they provided these, they're very splendid people, just really genuine folks to have in our community, so I do congratulate them.
I know they're not here, but I think we should give them a round of applause.
Yes, that's fine. All right, item seven, claims.
I did have a question on page 15 for claims, the Mayfield store for $5,922.
What?
It said it was for juvenile detention.
Yeah, I think that was put in the wrong vendor. I thought she had, she had changed it.
I looked at it and I said, wow.
Yeah, she had changed it.
Must have been a fun event.
Do we need to make a note of that when we approve it, that it's changed, or?
I don't, because she did change, I think it's just you didn't get the.
The updated one, all right.
I mean, you can't, I mean, if you feel uncomfortable, that's fine.
I'd move approval as long as the change on page 15 is noted, that it did not go, $5,922.50 did not go to Mayfield store.
Yeah, that goes to the minimum.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the claims with the note about the Mayfield store being adjusted. Further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries, claims are approved. February payroll, yes, sir.
Can I bring up, ask one more question about that Meyer Henry bill? Did you check that out?
I haven't looked at it yet, we were going to pull it out and look at it, so.
I was digging through some notes of mine, and I had in the discussion that we had when he was there, that he would take it on a one-third contingency basis, and no expenses would go to the county.
And Don, that could be right, I haven't looked at the contract, I'm, in your notes, that's probably correct, I just haven't looked at it yet.
Okay, just don't want it paid.
What?
I just don't want it paid.
Yeah, no, I understand.
February payroll.
Move approval of February payroll.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve February payroll, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries, payroll's approved. Item number eight, 2020 Bridge Inspection Program Resolution.
It's for yearly, every year we have to hire someone or have someone in charge of our bridge inspections, it's a yearly deal, that's what all counties do. In order to have the DOT pay the 80% of the bridge inspections, we have to let them know and notify them through this resolution of who their bridge inspectors are. I guess my request is to continue on with Clark Engineering. We do have a lot of things going on with them right now, and I feel they have worked well with us. So I guess, if there's any questions?
Was there any bid process for this?
For this, no, I, we did not do any bids.
Are we still?
It is not required by the state to go for bids.
They get prescreened by the state, correct?
There's 21 approved.
Yes.
Are there any approved from Yankton?
Yes. But I just feel as of right now, we have a lot of irons in the fire with Clark Engineering, and I feel that we should continue on with them.
I move approval of the Clark Engineering appointment as our bridge inspector.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution using Clark Engineering. Further discussion?
For further discussion, are we still planning on doing yearly inspections on?
On the Ford Jim River Bridges, yes.
Okay, good.
I guess I'd like to just say I don't have any issues with Clark, I would like to see a bid process myself, but.
I guess I can, I could see both sides of it, you know, with your saying, if we can get a more affordable bid somewhere else, but also on the other end, Clark Engineering knows these bridges and has worked with them, so I guess it's, you hate to have another company that's a little bit, you know, maybe a little bit cheaper, but we've worked with Clark, they've been good to us and they know our infrastructure.
And it is nice they give us, help us with a prioritization list, you know, from bridges that are in good condition to the worst, and.
Adams Hughes.
Yep, then they've also.
Do we get a punch card for it, like if we do so many bridge inspections, we get a free one as well? Okay, I'll take it.
Then also they, like with the five-year plan, anytime I've ever needed any help, they're more than willing to come down to the office, because they help go through the, come up with a plan, bridge plan for the five-year plan on this, so.
What's a bridge inspection cost? I know each one is different, but what's?
I think roughly all the bridges in the county is roughly $80,000.
Total.
How many bridges is that?
Eighty, 70.
78, wasn't it?
Somewhere, yeah, right around 80.
Yeah.
So about a, roughly a thousand dollars a bridge then, roughly, okay.
Further discussion, we have a motion on the table to approve the resolution using Clark Engineering. All right, we will vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay.
Aye.
Motion carries, resolutions approved with Clark Engineering. Spring load limits, they went on on Friday.
Yep, they're up, they went up as of last Friday, so.
Okay, and?
And they'll be on until.
Next week.
It'll be a little while.
So Bonhomme County?
Bonhomme County went up Friday, we went up Friday. Turner and Clay County went up yesterday. Hutchinson went up last Thursday.
Okay.
Hutchinson was the first out of all of us.
So essentially, our region is under load limits.
Yep, yep.
I think we might have been, we could have gone a few days earlier, I know when I was driving out in the country, there's, you know, quite a bit of water on the roads already, so I think next year if we could maybe do a little better job talking about it, maybe in late January and early February, because, you know, we never know when these load limits are going to come on, and it's always good to have, I know I got a couple calls on Friday that when load limits went on, and.
Well, and I did put a notice in the paper the Saturday before that they can be, they will be going on.
And that's good, that's good, yeah.
Do we put something on our webpage or anywhere, someone?
I guess, no, I did not, I did not have it on the webpage, I can.
I think that's good, I added, somebody asked me just if, in general, where they can, if they can just go to the webpage and find it.
I'll get a hold of Valley tomorrow and have her.
That's what I tell a lot of my constituents, too, to look in the paper, and they said, we don't get the paper, so.
Okay.
A lot of them, some read it online and some just don't get it.
I guess I could put it on the Highway Department Facebook page also.
Okay. All right.
Usually the Facebook page for the Highway Department, I only put on the major stuff, but yeah.
Century Link right-of-way application.
For the 72-count microfiber, it would be right along southwest Jim River Road, which would be the, the road going out to Kellins Pit, right off of Whiting Drive, going north, be along in the east ditch, I guess I don't see no issue in this, so I guess we just need approval.
Remove approval of the right-of-way application.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Century Link's right-of-way application, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries, right-of-way application is approved.
Oh, and Jamesville Bridge was open as of last Friday, so.
We made it. So what, again, what is the cost to Yankton County for that, repair of that bridge?
Have not gotten, you know, haven't got any bills in yet.
So it should be paid by the state, because it was before March 8th, so that should be 100% covered by the state.
Yeah, cost-wise, I guess, I couldn't tell you the exact dollar amount right now, but yes, it will be paid by the state.
Very good job on that. Thank you for your efforts on that.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, item number nine, 2019 Bridge Inspection Presentation, Clark Engineering. Yep, it's the new one.
Hi, in the audience, can you, can you guys hear everything with our new sound system? Is it better than in the past? All right.
Well, it's just loading up, I'll introduce ourselves, there it goes. I'm Josh Prather, Clark Engineering, this is Adam Polly, and we're going to talk about the bridge inspections we did in 2019. We're just going to cover the two that we had under that resolution you talked about earlier. We did other ones with like the emergency inspections and stuff like that, but we'll just talk about the two tonight. So the first one is Fleegs Bridge, structure number 68156182. There's just a couple pictures that we take of every bridge, the profile and the alignment. And if you have any questions, go ahead and stop me at any point. Next, a couple other pictures of this bridge, the deterioration didn't really change, the corrosion on the girders was kind of the same as we see every year on this bridge. The section loss in the bottom flange, again, we compared it to last year's, it looked pretty similar, no more advanced deterioration. There's a cracked weld on girder three over bent five between the cover plate and flange. Again, that's been on there as long as we've been inspecting it, and it hasn't gotten any worse. Here's something new that we found this year, there was a cracked splice on girder two and span three. The picture on the left is how we found it, and then on the right, we did a die-penetrant crack test on it, and pretty much we showed where the crack was. It's hard to see on here, but there's two yellow marks that go up to the top and the bottom where our tape measure is, and that just shows where the crack starts and stops. So we found out that it didn't go into the flanges, just stayed in the web, so we were able to arrest that crack and just drill out the ends of the crack tips, so that way it didn't propagate any farther into the flanger down through the web. And I think we inspected this bridge on August 20th, and then, it was August 26th we had this fixed, so it was a pretty quick turnaround, I mean, six days. And then, just a couple more pictures of Fleegs here, some tree debris, and then the weight limit sign. The recommendations we have for Fleegs, then remove the debris on the abutment sills and over the vents, repair the collision dammers to the northeast wing wall, the structure's nearing the end of its useful life, should be programmed for replacement.
What's the collision dam, is that from like logs, or is that from vehicles?
That's from vehicles, and again, that's been there since we started inspecting, just kind of spalled out, and then it was a, I don't know, some of the rebar showing too. Some of the other recommendations, repair the erosion on the west berm, collision dam with the guard rails, there's a missing bolt on the north end of the railing, and then others as needed, and then continue to post the structure at 2433, which it's currently posted at. Any questions on Fleegs Bridge?
I see in your recommendation, the structure is nearing the end of its useful life and should be programmed for replacement.
Yep.
How soon?
I don't know, as soon as possible, I guess, I mean, I mean, that's kind of a conversation we've had here before, I mean, if money wasn't an issue, I guess you'd do it.
Has any, anything changed over the last year that would cause us alarm where we have to push the project forward?
I would say stick to the same plan you guys have had since we've been coming down here.
Best case scenario, how long do we have, how much life is left in this bridge if we, if we continue to do our maintenance?
I mean, that's a tricky question, too, because I mean, as far as the postings go, too, I mean, you could, I mean, we can keep posting it for loads, and we can keep, if you want it to be legal, then obviously no, it doesn't have any other life, but if you want to keep prolonging the life, we can keep pretty much as long as you want to. You want to elaborate on that at all? Pretty much. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
No.
No? I mean, it's a gray area. I mean, the end of its useful life could be when the post, when we put a posting on it, it could be when, you know, the single unit vehicles isn't at 24, which is near legal, could be when the trucks are at 50%, it's kind of.
Don and I are looking for you to say five years, or 10 years, or 20 years right now.
Yeah. I mean, it depends, if we come in two years from now and got a lot worse, then yeah, I mean, we'd have to do it then, but if it lasts 20, 30 years, and we don't change, see any changes.
We, of course, nor do you want to have an accident out there, but when you get a report from the engineer and says, is nearing the end of its use of life and should be programmed for replacement, in my mind, that creates some potential liability.
Yeah, I can see where you're coming from.
If I remember correctly, the last year when we went through all of the bridges, many of them had that last recommendation on there.
Yeah. A lot of them do, a lot of them have reached their design life, I mean, a lot of these were only designed for 70 years, and, you know, they're past that, some of them are reaching 100 years, so.
And certainly one driver of going to yearly inspections on these bridges is to catch exactly what you were talking about, at what point is that change enough to say it's, it's time?
And if we see significant changes, which we didn't this year, we can lower the posting and have that conversation with you guys about when we're going to program this for replacement. Okay, we'll move on to the next one. Next one, the Marindale Bridge, structure number 68198100. There's a profile and the alignment.
How old is that bridge?
I don't know off the top of my head, I can look which.
Can't be that old.
I appreciate the jackrabbit.
It should be a minor up there. Mike, is this one of the bridges we're doing this year?
Yes, this one is.
This is our FEMA bridge?
This one was built in 1988. This is what I have of that one. But as we're seeing a little bit here, the storm wasn't too nice to it. So here's the next slide, there's just a hole, it's just, there's usually grout in there and it fell through, we've had that problem for years, it's hard to keep stuff to stay in there, it's not really structural. Then to the right, typical conditions of the deck units. There's the bottom of it, go ahead.
Yeah, you said it was, Marindale Bridge was built in 88, who built it, do you know?
I do not know.
Doesn't have a record?
No.
Mike, do you know?
Can you find out?
This bridge here, too, am I right, the reason the ground is falling out, the deck has been lifted off and set back on.
Just like the Fleeg and the Johnson, they were built back in 60 or 61 or something, so it's not very long life.
Hold on, I don't have to bridge so much field, it's what?
It's underneath.
Yeah, pile and.
It's underneath.
Yeah, we'll get to that in a second here, Gary. The right picture, we have a spot on the north leg of the deck unit, exact same as last year. Now, the picture on the left, it's typical condition of the piles below the ground line. We haven't been able to see that before, because it washed out, you can see how they're deteriorating, probably about 50%, it's 25% section loss. Abutment two is leaning away from the channel, you can see there how it isn't plumb. And now we have the berms, we have those gabion baskets, and you can see how those have sloughed down and have washed out from behind them. I mean, they used to be up, you know, close to the abutments, and now they're 10, 15 feet away, just kind of fell into the creek with the flood that we had about a year ago.
Some of those got torn open by the ice, too, didn't they, on those, or?
Gabion baskets are made wider.
But yeah, that happens, a lot of those will get torn open by ice.
And that one is scheduled for replacement when, was that?
This year.
Is that a wise decision with, you know, Marindale Township wanting to go to Turner County, should we be replacing a bridge in that? I guess I'm asking the board.
My opinion on that is, those folks are taxpayers in our county right now, and. And my, my personal hope is they remain taxpayers. And it, it is a FEMA application. It's an eighty, uh, seventy-five percent government, ten percent state, fifteen percent county. I feel we should commit to that obligation. That is my opinion, I'm one of five.
I'd agree.
I agree with Jerry.
I, I would agree too. I, I know, I guess I can appreciate the concern, but I think there's plenty of people in the township that potentially want to stay.
I can go, I can go along with it.
Um, there's another picture of the failed gabion baskets. You can just see how they kind of fell into the creek, kind of narrowed the channel. Um, that left picture there, you can see how that water's moving faster. I mean, it washed out there, I don't know how many feet.
What's, what's the normal process when you, when you repair this bridge? What do you do with them, uh, rock baskets?
Probably just tear them out. And I don't know what the plan is to put a new one in. I don't know if they're putting sheet piling in there to hold back the bend bankment or, do we have a plan set for that yet?
Riprap.
Riprap? So, some bigger class riprap that won't wash out, like those gabion baskets are only just six inches or so.
So, these baskets have to be replaced or?
I don't think we'd put those back in, I'm not, I'm not aware of the plan right now.
They will reuse the rock.
Who, who, who did this to work? Put one back?
I'm not sure. I don't know why this keeps happening to technology.
What's the reason for such a short life on that bridge? Is that the design of those or what, what caused us to get only thirty years of life out of that one as opposed to some of the other bridges?
I mean, I think the flooding is what did, is what washed it out. I mean, we had one of the biggest events I've ever seen for sure.
But there is a lot of rat on that that had taken place before that, is that, I, I don't assume, they don't build them like that anymore, I assume?
Yeah.
Or is it just a poor design, I assume?
Yeah, the timber abutments.
Yeah.
Back in the sixties, seventies, eighties, they were cheap. And they were, they were put all over and once you get that, like he said, when they're out of the water, um, they're really good. But when they're in the soil, they get that moisture in there.
There was a culvert in there at one time and that washed out. I can't remember how many years ago, it's a long time ago. But they, they'd put in a culvert, this is back in the seventies probably, and then big flood, culvert was half a mile down creek.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot.
We've had a lot of, spent a lot of money with that.
Mike, Mike, on this one, if I recall correctly, at first we were just looking at fixing underneath, but since the deck has already been lifted a couple of times, FEMA agreed to go ahead and replace the whole thing.
Right.
Yeah, and are we going longer or the same length?
Longer.
So, this, this next bridge is essentially going to be upgraded in the process, so we felt that was a better way to go.
Ninety foot, so then it won't be such a, right now the, the gabion baskets are so steep.
And they're so close together and it funnels that water, so we're trying to spread the bridge out and do a little help on the erosion issue as well. So, that's one reason the whole bridge is being replaced is because we've already had issues with that deck being removed.
Then the pilings are rotten and tipped and it's just...
Right. So, it's, um, even though it's a young bridge.
Mr. Clemens, to your question about the gabion baskets there, I think they tore um, when the creek outlets, there's a big scour hole there and that got really bad and they all just fell in. And the wires just couldn't take that, of course. That's why they tore. Not sure if it was ice or debris, but that's my.
Well, when we went and looked at that right after the flood event and it, our thought was a big chunk of ice came in and, because it looked like something just came and hit it and tore it open, I guess, is that, is that part of our FEMA app? I mean, that's, that's what it looked like to me, it may be a big chunk of ice came and it certainly didn't help it when it hit some of those, but I guess we'll never know for sure what happened. Thank you.
Any other questions about the two bridges? All right, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, item number ten, proposed changes to the zoning ordinance, Mr. Bruce Jensen.
Commissioner, thank you for letting me come here. I'll give this a pass and then I'll... Thank you. I'll let you look at them a little bit before I start. Probably already know what they are, but...
Would you like me to read this for the audience?
Yeah, you can.
I will go ahead and do that for the audience. Change number one, reduce minimum lot size from twenty acres to two acres. Since two thousand and three, the most common variance applied for has been a reduction in lot size. The majority of mortgage companies prefer a smaller lot size or will charge higher interest rates on larger lots. Most of the people requesting these variances are not city people, but are sons and daughters of our rural agricultural resident. They grew up in and around Yankton County and simply want to live and raise their children near their families in a rural setting. Change number two, changes Class E to one hundred to nine ninety-nine animal units. Currently it is three hundred to nine ninety-nine. It also changes Class F to fifty to ninety-nine animal units. It currently is one to two ninety-nine. This change allows residents in an agricultural district to have up to forty-nine animal units without any zoning permit. It also clearly makes new CAFOs follow the rules as conditional uses. Change number three, changes Section five nineteen dash five setback from neighboring residences from thirteen twenty feet, which is a quarter mile, and to twenty-six forty feet, which is a half mile. This change would standardize setbacks in the county while protecting the property rights of our current agricultural residents.
Thank you. Uh, I picked these three out because they're real contentious and when I was on the commission, that twenty acres, all we did was, uh, you know, doing variances on all of them. And the Class Two change, which is nice change because to have one animal, you got to get a permit. And then if you have fifty, under fifty, you don't. So, that take care of small farmers that would want to have thirty, forty head of animals. And then, uh, change three, of course, is a quarter mile to a half mile. And I know that's been a real hot issue in this county for quite a number of years. I checked with, uh, about fifteen counties in the state of South Dakota, Compero, T-Yankton's County, and most of them, uh, setbacks are a quarter, some of them are a quarter, some of them are a half and some are even more than a mile. So, I don't think this is out of line for that, for the, what, where we live and, and the, uh, topography of the properties. I think there's nothing wrong with that. And, uh, I took a petition around, got quite a number of signatures and people are real concerned about number three. And they said that twenty acre is ridiculous, so I'd like to see that. And you guys can change that if you want, but if don't, I'm not threatening, but I will go to election. I can do that. So, it's up to you, if you want to spend ten thousand for a special election, county taxpayers' money, you can. But on your hand, these three here, and there's other things, that's what, uh, is, uh, if you want to get a committee together, because there's other, uh, things in the zoning ordinance that need to go through and critique and, uh, change some of them. And now is the time to do it. But, uh, these, the, why I picked these three out are pretty simple to understand and they've got a lot of common sense. So, whatever you feel. Got any questions?
Joe, did you want to give an update on the plan for changes to the ordinance this year?
Yeah, I was going to ask if you're aware of the process that we're engaged in now. We're currently working on changes to accessory structure size, which we started almost a year ago. And now we have fully staffed office and, um, so we're moving forward with those changes shortly, uh, followed by just some cleanup issues within the ordinance that we've identified over the last year.
These three things are a big thing in the county.
Right.
They are, they need to be addressed in one way or the other. Like I said, I'm not threatening, but I will take a double vote and people are really fed up with, especially number three. I mean, we got to do something. And like I said, go around the state, call people around the state, but that's, that's not our line. It is not our line, half mile is not out of line. So...
And Mr. Jensen, what you're looking at doing is setting up a, is it a committee?
Yeah.
According to what's seven dash eighteen A dash twenty-eight, which I had actually never heard of, but South Dakota law does allow
Mm-hmm.
A committee to be, well, I can read it. Uh, revision committee appointed by board, each board not more often than once every five years may appoint a committee of one or more competent persons to prepare and submit for its consideration in ordinance, which revises the ordinance of the county. And so what, I guess you're looking at is for us to set up a committee to look at these three changes? And then they would still have to come back to us for approval, so...
But what I've heard when I went and got names, is people are upset because you guys, and I'm not blaming you all, but you sat on this a long time, not getting anything done with changes, and they want changes. And if we can't get them here, we'll get them voting. We can change them there.
How many years were you on the commission?
Twelve years.
Did this ever come up as a concern during those twelve years?
Minimum, like I said, all variances, all twenty acres came up all the time.
So, why wasn't it changed back then?
We talked about it, but there was a number of people on the commission at that time, just like now, didn't want to change it. Because they were afraid that if we go down too far, it'd take away from agriculture and that's not true.
You are aware though that we've engaged in discussions about these specific items that plan and zoning?
Yeah, but we're not, we're not, you haven't acted on them yet. We need to get going. We, the people, I tell you right now, people are getting fed up with it, period. I'm not going to argue with it, that's just the way it is. I've been out there and talked to a lot of people, door to door and stuff, and they, they're upset.
So, so why don't you finish with our plan for what we had set out, Greg?
Right, so I guess the, the next change, um, or plan changes to discuss not just these three things, but
No, I just picked the simple ones out.
All of, uh,
Okay, so.
Article five, rather than making multiple changes, um, I think every time we make a change, it's going to affect subsequent parts of the ordinance. I have a question on the petition, I have two questions. Is this a petition to set up a committee or a petition to enact these changes?
Committee. And, and as you know, when you three ran, what was your main reason for running and getting in? Caffles, let's, let's be truthful about it. And you haven't done anything, hardly, since you've been on here. That's why people are upset and they are upset. So, I'm not chewing you out or anything, I'm just saying, when you promise something when you're running, you better do it. So...
I see Section Two is amended, um, with the Class F from fifty to ninety-nine and then Section five nineteen to the right, uh, the applicable paragraphs, there's a seven F and an eight F. Um, can you enlighten us what that is?
Which one now?
In amended.
The ERF.
Uh, there, under number two, there's an amended Section five nineteen as follows and it's the classes, Class A, B, C, D, E, F.
Uh-huh.
F has been amended to fi- fifty to ninety-nine.
Mm-hmm.
And then to the right of that, it's, the applicable paragraphs of five nineteen are called out as two, three, four, five, seven, F, eight, F, nine, ten, eleven, twelve and thirteen. Today, there is no seven F or eight F, I believe.
I think that's what he's talking about.
That's what I'm talking about, change it.
Adding a...
So, what I'm, so what I'm wondering is what, what does seven F and eight F say? It's not part of this petition?
Well, the, the, uh, on the other ones, uh, the other ones are fine. It's just these two want to change on the animal units. That's the only one, because the big one was if you had one hog or one cow, you had a permit.
Right, what I'm saying is there's a change here shown, but the, what the change is, is not shown. So, I don't know that I could, could give a, uh, indication on whether I support it or not.
That's why we need a committee to look at this. This isn't changing it now, this is to look at it. That's why we're looking, you're going to look at this and many other things. The committee will need, then you're going to have to recommend, that's what the committee does.
I, I think, yeah, I think that's exactly right. The committee would go through like, for example, a reduction from twenty acres to two acres. Well, then some, maybe the seventy-five foot setback, maybe that's probably not going to work with two acres. So, that would probably have to be adjusted and I think that's, would be the job and the goal of the committee is to go through these and make sure that if you change this here, you might have to change the definition in some other area and change something else.
That's going to be a, a hard job because there's a lot in there to look at. There's a lot of changes, really.
So, what is the planning commission's role in all of this then? Because right now that was on their plate to do this summer to have it done by fall.
I still want a committee, they can work with the planning commission, I suppose. I don't know how you want to do it. Committee is going to really look at it and they can work with the planning commission. I don't see there to be any problem.
Your suggestions on, uh, the three changes, uh, reply to any of the zones, ag, commercial, right?
Most of them are ag, yeah, are commercial. I mean, it's the way most of them run it in the other counties.
Well, I, I'm not sure that's totally right, but...
Well, just look at it, call them.
I have.
Whatever. I, I can tell you right now, this is not, nothing to do to hurt ag. When I was on the commission, oh, Jensen, you're against ag. Hell, I was, that's never against ag. I know how ag is important, but then there's other people, yeah, they live out there, but they got rights too, they pay taxes too.
But they live in an agriculturally zoned.
Huh?
They live in an ag zoned area.
Well, that's fine. Anybody can, when the people...
Then they should be with the ordinances that were set up for ag zoned areas.
Whatever.
No, not whatever, that's the way it is, that's the ordinance.
Well, they do look at it, doesn't it?
If, if a committee were to be formed, what would be the intent of the committee? How, these three change, they would have proposed these three changes or would they...
Plus, other changes, look, just not these, you look at other things that, there's a lot of things in the, uh...
Well, there's plenty in the ordinance that needs to be changed. I, I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm wondering what the, what the plan would be.
Well, that's up to the, the, uh, committee. That's why your work, want to appoint one.
Really be up to us to set task conditions instead, I mean, to, here are the three changes, but would be up to us to...
Who selects the committee?
Huh?
Who selects the committee?
I suppose you would, I have no idea.
Don't have any idea?
Appointed by the, appointed by the board, it says seven eighteen A dash twenty-eight, appointed by the board by us.
And the one thing is that whoever gets on there, when I got on our, when I got in, it was all stacked, hundred percent ag. No other people were on there and we had made a big change. So, what I'm saying is you got to have different persons to get different ideas, not just the one that you want. That's a bad precedent, this boy.
And I think that's what we've done in committees that we've set up, looking at different projects. different projects. We've gotten a wide variety of people.
But at one time, it wasn't. Not when I got on the commission. It was all ag people. I can name them if you want to, but I won't.
Well, we've appointed two task force since the first of 2019, and we've tried to meet the criteria you are outlining, so that has been our track record.
Okay. You guys can decide what you want to do, but.
Do we want to get any public comment on this?
What?
Do we want to get, I'm asking, do we want to get any public comment on this?
Do we need it at this time?
No. So basically, I guess he's asking for us to appoint a board that would be appointed by us to just give us recommendations on these three changes, and I guess I don't, I don't see any harm in that. If we don't like the changes, we don't have to consider them, so.
Now, we do have a whole planning commission that has planned to go, go about doing all of these changes, so.
We, we also have
Well, we got to, we got to get them done. We can talk about them for years and not do anything. That's a problem.
I think the point is that it's in motion. It, the changes have been discussed and are being discussed.
Well, that's fine. That's great.
And the changes being proposed, so we have
Let's get, let's get them on the table and find out about them. Let's, let's do it.
Have you been coming to the planning commissions and listening to their work sessions?
Not all of them. No, I've been to some of them.
Okay. Thank you for coming
Yeah, no, I
And participating, because that's what those sessions are.
I keep in step, pretty much everything. I try to.
Mr. State's attorney, seventeen, or seven dash eighteen A dash twenty-eight, have you had any experience with that? I mean, that looks like that's an authority that is granted to us, and what's your opinion on this?
No, sorry. And you're referencing the statute. Mr. Jensen did come to me, and I did review it before. I wasn't aware of it also, that it existed at the time. But my understanding of what Mr. Jensen's asking is just if you want to appoint a committee, it's discretionary, under whatever rules, and the proposals are just ideas of what can be considered, and the size or the, the size of the committee is up to you. What you want the committee to review is up to you. How you want to handle the committee is up to you. I don't think the statute allows or constrains you to anything specific, whether it works with the planning commission, whether it's separate, whether it's independent, however you want to do it. And that's my understanding of my conversation with Mr. Jensen, and that's my understanding of what he's saying today. So I'm believing that those are just the things he's believing that are highly important. It doesn't mean those are the most important, and it doesn't mean that's what the committee is going to recommend. You know, the committee could be totally different than what that's being recommended. But again, my understanding of that statute is it's up to you on what you want to do.
And the committee, it's just a recommendation we can take into, leave at that point.
When you, when you read that statute, it even makes, it's your discretion to appoint it if you want to appoint one, and then it's also your discretion on whether you would adopt the changes that they're making and recommending to, so.
I think, Mr. Jensen, is, you're just asking for a committee to do a specific job on this issue, just like the ambulance task force is one specific problem, and so it's, you know, parallel like that.
And I don't know how many guy, people you want on. I don't know. That's up to you if you appoint a committee, you know. Sometimes a lot is not good either, so you've got to get somebody that knows a lot, it helps, I tell you that. Because there's a lot on those ordinance, there's a lot to know about them, that I know.
I'm going to refer you to Section eighteen oh nine of our ordinance amendments and rezoning. The planning commission shall have the power to hear and make recommendations in accordance with provisions of this ordinance on requests for amendment or change in zoning. A petition for an amendment or change in zoning will not be acted upon until, and then there's about six, seven, eight more paragraphs with the criteria. But I guess my point is, you can form that committee and prepare changes and present them to the planning and zoning depart, commission. It's already a process in here. You could form your own committee, prepare changes, and have them presented following eighteen oh nine of our ordinance.
Because they, they have to go through the planning commission no matter what.
Right.
So why don't the planning commission just do it? Why do I have to appoint a committee?
Well, for the third time, we've been working on changes, so.
And the goal was to have the, the Article Five reviewed and updated by the end of this summer, this fall, because you have several hearings and publications and et cetera.
I know that.
I, I guess I don't, I don't see any harm in setting up a committee to give recommendations, even if they give those recommendations to the planning commission. I know even a few members of the planning commission have expressed to me, it'd be, you know, this could be just like a working session of the planning commission, really.
Should the planning commission then take the lead on doing that?
Well, I think that's what this committee could be, though.
But if, if the planning commission feels they need other folks to commit to doing this, is that not their choice, if they feel they're understaffed?
I'm not aware that the planning commission has the authority to create, to, you know, create a committee with people outside that planning commission to do that. What is your thought, Rob, on that? The planning commission just can't create a committee on its own with outside members to do that? Do they have that authority?
And then I'm assuming what they could do is seek advice from
Sure.
Other people and, and ask them with their opinions and put together some kind of plan. I would believe they could do that.
And then hear it in, in the planning commission hearing or an open meeting.
I guess, what's, what's the downside of appointing a committee to review this?
Yes, my, my fear is that we appoint a committee, they come up with something, and the planning commission says, no. And so all of that work offline is kind of wasted to some degree without incorporating the planning commission in the process. No different than the planning commission working with the Board of Adjustment on changes they're making, and they're saying, well, this is kind of what we're thinking. Is this where we want to go? And are you going to approve this when you get it? That's my fear, is that you will end up getting frustrated if you name five folks, and they come up with a plan, and we all go, mm, that's not going to work. So my preference would be to have all kinds of public input at the planning commission and to rely on outside advice, but through the planning commission, because it's going to save time in the end.
Well, the problem is with, you know, the planning commission only meeting once a month. We have met twice, a couple times, is there's so much stuff to get through. There hasn't been a lot of updates in the last ten years. We got wind, we have to go with this entire ordinance. We got internet. We got Article Five. We got commercial. In my opinion, and I've been on the zoning and planning five years, is we need some help because there's too much to do in the planning commission, and there's not enough time. And the evidence of that is that we've had, we've gone an entire year, and we haven't had one change through yet. So, I mean, that, that kind of speaks to that. I don't see any harm in appointing a committee like this, and they could surely present it to the planning commission and get the planning commission's opinion on it before it comes to us. I don't have any issue with that. But I, I consider this just working on and developing solutions. Just like I said, okay, lot size goes from twenty acres to two acres. Well, then the setbacks, they're probably going to have to change, okay? And so we go through the setbacks. Are there some definitions that are going to change? Sure. I don't, I don't envision this committee, and we should, could certainly put the criteria on, where we just say, you know, look at what this change would do and what other parts of that ordinance would that affect. And that's something where the planning commission doesn't have time to do that. I mean, there's hundreds of, hundreds of definitions and things like that that we have to go through. So I, I don't, I don't, I don't see an issue with them doing that and presenting it to the, the planning commission, but that's, that's my opinion.
I would have to concur with Dan. I guess, you know, we're both military. We kind of think the same. Take some, five or six of your men in the squad, and you put them over here, and you, you solve this problem, just like Mr. Jensen wants to do. And I'm sure you can find people to help him. There's other people, and there's, they're probably pretty savvy about, about this. So I, I'd agree with Dan that, yeah, let's, let's set up another committee, just like with the task force, with the ambulance, and, and get it done. You know, the quicker the better, because if you're only meeting once a month, planning and zoning, it's going to take forever.
Because all the planning commission really does is recommends. They can't make ordinance change by themselves.
No, but it does have to go through that.
Well, yeah, but it eventually comes on your table. That's where it comes. That's what I'm saying.
Sherry, I guess I agree with Mr. Jensen. We need to get something done, and it's, needs to be done soon. But I think Joe and the commission has set up a, a plan to get that done, and if this, if this group can assist in that, great. But it looks to me like it could be detrimental to the success of planning committee.
Well, like I say, I think all the input and, and proposed changes and things are more than welcome. I just, I don't understand why, the necessity to go the extent of enacting seven eighteen A dash twenty-eight, when it's clearly spelled out that it's, that we can do that in eighteen oh nine of our own ordinance. You can put proposed, you could get your own task force or group together and bring changes forward. That's, that's, that's allowed. You could have done it in the last year, since we haven't been getting anything done. You could have come at any time and done that. And I guess if, what I would like to see, if, if you would like to move forward with this and come back, I would like to see a well-thought-out plan before I'm going to say I'm going to appoint a committee to do so.
Well, I guess
I want to know a number of committee members, who they are, which articles are going to be reviewed in a timeline.
I wish, I would like to see you guys vote tonight on whether you want a committee or not. I really would. No big deal. If you don't want to do it, vote no. I don't care.
Yes, I don't, I don't see any harm in appointing a committee to review this, though.
Not replacing the planning commission. You're giving them help. They got a lot of work. They do a lot of, people don't realize what the planning commission does, with all the fires they got to put out, try to put out. So I'd like to see it get voted on tonight. If you don't want to, fine.
What is, what does the planning commission say? Do they want, do they say they want help?
Yeah, I've had some frustration with some planning commission members, and some that, when they heard about this, actually wanted to volunteer for this, because our main one meeting a month has, is where we do the county business, conditional use permits and other things. And then we have been trying to have one work session, but, you know, it takes a long time to get anything done in the work session. There's a lot of debate. There's a lot of public comment, which is good, but it's also makes things really slow, and the evidence is that we haven't had any changes go through yet. And the way that it's set up with the planning commission, where they would meet on the second Tuesday, then they would have to notice for a change ten days. That wouldn't make the next commission, so it's, it's really a six to seven week process after everything is finalized to even move a change forward. And so if we're looking at it, if, if the work we have in front of the planning commission as of right now, even if everything went smooth, I don't think we could get this done before the end of the year, because of the simple, the time that it takes to do, so. And there's no reason, I, I can't see somebody doing some of this work outside, presenting it to the planning commission, and if the planning commission blesses off on it or says, oh, you know, let's change this here, that's really helping them out. And we could plan, you know, the board, it's our choice how big it, big it wanted to be. I mean, we could have two planning commission members and maybe somebody from outside the community to get a different perspective, and if we don't like what they present, we don't have to approve it.
Oh, you guys make the final decisions, so.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I don't see
The planning commission has that authority right now. You've got nine, nine. You could split in groups of three and then have three community members volunteer. You guys can do, you have the authority to do that now and meet offline.
And I agree.
And then you're, you're meeting what Mr. Jensen is asking for, is outside people to look at a specific area, and then you could have concurrently running wind, ag, and whatever else you wanted to pick.
Yeah, and I agree. That's, that's how I, and I've proposed that several times with no support, but that we have nine members on planning and zoning. If we want to speed things up, divide and conquer. These three people can take wind, these three people can take whatever, and we can get outside support experts in the field and, and then bring those changes back to the planning commission. And that's how we can speed things along. And I think what you're proposing is, is part of that. I just don't understand, we, we can do it today without seventeen, or seven eighteen twenty-eight.
And I know you've got a lot of work to do, but the thing is, we got to get this going. Sat on it too long. Well, just not these changes, a lot of other things, too. I know stuff. I've been on there twelve years. I know what that's like.
I'm just thinking, the last changes to ag were done in two thousand and six, so.
Well, when people start talking, start listening. People are fed up, period. So whatever.
So at this point, I would entertain a motion, if there is a motion.
I'd make a motion. We set up a committee in accordance with South Dakota codified law seven dash eighteen A dash twenty-eight A to review changes, and we advertise for three positions.
I have a motion on the floor.
Second.
I have a second. So I have a motion to advertise to set up a committee per seven dash eighteen A dash twenty-eight. Further discussion?
What's the three positions, Dan?
Well, I, I, it's random, and I can amend it. I was just saying, a board of three people. It could be five. That's just the num, it says we can afford a board of any size. It can be one, it can be two, it can be anybody. I guess I thought, I thought three would be a good, small number.
So are you thinking, in addition to, if the planning and zoning would divide their nine into three groups?
No, I, I think it would just be three people, and they could be whoever we want them to be. They could be planning commission members, they could be people from the general public, somebody from the drainage. I guess, I, my proposal is that we advertise for those three open positions, and we pick the three best candidates. Or if you want five, we could do five. It doesn't matter to me. I just thought three was a good even. A small group sometimes gets more done than a big group.
Further discussion? I feel this is better done through the planning commission in creating their own subcommittees, and certainly asking for volunteers from the public to do it is exactly the same thing. The only difference is you're working directly with the planning commission, so no communication is lost.
Unless the planning commission members have to live with the consequences of the changes.
They do.
As well as the Board of Adjustment.
Further discussion? Roll call vote on this.
Clemens?
Yes.
Swenson?
Yes.
Kettering?
No.
Lost?
No.
Healy?
No.
Motion fails. So we will leave this matter with the planning commission, and you guys will bring this up with the planning commission at the next meeting.
Would, Mr. Jensen, would you be willing to get involved with discussion on how this could be set up with the planning commission?
Yeah, I sure would.
I think that'd be very beneficial.
Yeah, I will. Sure.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you
Thank you.
For listening.
Thanks, Bruce.
All right. Item number eleven, Status of Zoning Enforcement on Expired Permits. Phil Taub.
My name is Kathy Weiss. Last November and December, five hog confinements were found to have expired building permits and CUPs. That determination was made by the zoning administrator and upheld by this board, but all of them have continued to build and occupy these structures. Article twenty-three clearly states, in case any Article 23 clearly states, "In case any building or structure is erected, constructed, reconstructed, altered, repaired, converted, or maintained, or any building, structure, or land is used in violation of this ordinance, the zoning administrator or a designee as determined by the county commission may institute any appropriate action or proceedings to prevent such unlawful erection, construction, reconstruction, alteration, repair, conversion, maintenance, or use, to restrain, correct, abate such violation to prevent the occupancy of said building, structure, or land, or to prevent any illegal act, conduct, business, or use in or about such premises." Article 23 also gives an assortment of penalties for violations. Why has nothing been done? You have the authority, according to the ordinance, that you sit idly by waiting for some court to render a decision when no such decision has been requested by the board. Sure, the operators of these facilities have filed a suit against your decision. They are willing to spend tens of thousands of dollars to file lawsuits, yet they can't muster less than $200 fee to reapply for the permits. In some cases, there's no fee at all. We have offered to meet and find solutions, but these solutions are becoming more difficult as time drags on. Three of the five facilities may have an easy remedy, while two are more complicated due to the fact that the structures built were never authorized as constructed. There's also another complaint out there that the D E N R has already ruled on, yet nothing has been done about it. Our zoning ordinance is important. It isn't perfect. It needs changes, but it is what we have right now. Too many people have invested too much sweat equity creating this ordinance to let a handful of people get away with ignoring it. The Commission has no problem finding people and forcing them to get permits for backyard swimming pools and garden sheds. Why not these hog barns? We, the taxpayers, need to know what has been done to enforce these zoning complaints.
Sorry, Kathy, and I can, I'll respond. I know you kind of made a reference to it, but they are all in litigation and so they're all part of the process. So they went to our insurance company. Our insurance company pursuant to our rules hires the attorney, so there's an attorney representing them. The attorney does have the ability pending litigation to request a preliminary injunction. So if they are not following the rules and they are, they currently do not have building permits and they are building when they shouldn't be building, then the attorney can make a request and ask for a preliminary injunction to stop any further building until further order of the court. And there's some criteria that needs to be met, like irreparable harm, a best interest, and those are things that need to be addressed at that time. So that's something that the attorney for the county can make a request and maybe a thought would be is, in our zoning ordinance, you have the ability to fill out one of those complaints, you know, to show that there is, if there is violations, then our zoning administrator will review it and then could get that to the attorney that's handling the litigation and make that request. And that would be the, using the courts, the court to do that at this time. But that's where jurisdiction would be, otherwise there's no other jurisdiction besides through the courts at the time because they're currently all pending and there's litigation all pending. And sorry, litigation goes slow, but my understanding and reviewing things is there's a process where, and I know you're part of the process of trying to get together and trying to resolve the issues that are currently pending. And I do know that's going further or going along because I, there were some correspondence even today referencing that. So hopefully it moves along a little sooner, but I apologize for the speed of the system.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I would entertain a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to go into Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, nay. Motion carries. We are now in Board of Adjustment. Thomas and Beth Keltzulis, CUP.
Hello?
Hi.
I guess, I don't know the full, how we're supposed to proceed here, so.
Tell us about your proj, state your name to the record and tell us about your project.
Tom Keltzulis. And we're putting up storage units at Lot 27 of Lakeside Use Area. And I pump and stuff out on Highway 52. We already have a building there to the north and we're proposing a building to the south.
It looks like the Planning Commission passed this eight zero.
Yes.
Did they have any concerns that they, any specific concerns, questions that you had to answer for them?
Mainly issues of, or questions about the building itself, whether it was dark sky lighting, any signage or anything like that.
Okay.
And yes, we'll have dark sky lighting and no signage.
Okay. And there's already access to the site?
Correct.
Road, et cetera?
Yes.
I'll direct the board also to page two. This is just kind of a form checklist that.
I like it.
That Gary Better helped come up with and kind of direct us to make sure we go through and cross our Ts, dot our Is, so you can kind of go through that. That's kind of what we discussed at the planning and zoning level.
Okay. So it is an allowed conditional use in this district. All of the public hearing notices were done. Planning Commission made the recommendation. So as far as the Board of Adjustment, these are the same exact topics that we need to discuss. The ingress and egress were discussed at the Planning Commission, off right-of-way parking, refuse in service areas, utilities, screening and buffering. It says here it was not needed, but you are putting trees and shrubs.
Trees and bushes along the south, south lot line and such area.
And it says no plans for signs, but you're having downlighting. Required yards and other open spaces are okay and general compatibility with adjacent properties is fine.
What kind of fence will you have around the outside perimeter?
There will be no, no fence around the perimeter. It's inside building, storage only. Everything will be locked and security cameras and such.
What about gravel or concrete?
There will be a 20-foot concrete pad in front of the structure and then it'll be a gravel driveway to that concrete pad.
How tall is the structure?
16-foot sidewalls, so would be probably about 18-foot at its peak.
Any other questions for the applicant before I open up for public comment? All right, sir, you can sit down for now. Thank you.
Yep.
Would anyone in the audience like to make a public comment at this time? All right, I see no one raising their hands for a public comment, so public comment is closed and I'll bring it back to the board. Further discussion.
I've just got one question. How do you come up with the list of notification people? Because my next-door neighbor is on the list and I'm not. I would have, I would have voted in favor of it. I mean, I'm in favor of the project, but.
Yeah, basically, per the ordinance, you go X amount of feet and everybody within X amount of feet gets notified. So yeah, you could be the next parcel over and that could notify possibly, but that's what it's based on.
Other questions?
I don't know if those ever discussed, but I guess I'd like to see a fence around it, but if it wasn't brought up or required, I guess it's not in there.
There, there's other storage units in that area and none of them have a fence. We mentioned it, but everything's going to be locked inside and there's not, you're not going to be storing anything outside.
They just seem to look a little nicer when there's a fence around them.
Well, he has planted some trees and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I'd move we approve the CUP for Thomas and Beth Keltzulis.
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 I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the CUP for the Keltzulises. Further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Kettering?
Yes.
Clemmich?
Yes.
Swenson?
No.
Healy?
Yes.
Los?
Yes. CUP is approved. Thank you. All right. Where'd my agenda go? Moving on to our next CUP for East River Electric. Would you state your name, please, and tell us what you're doing?
Good evening. Paul Letchy, representing East River Electric Power Cooperative. We're requesting a conditional use permit to erect a 65-foot-high communications tower in our existing Gavins Point substation, which is located just north of the dam on the north side of Highway 52 for substation upgrades, internal control and monitoring.
Is this very similar to what you did South Yudica?
Yeah, the major difference is the height of the tower, this tower's 30-foot shorter and this is going into an existing substation. Excuse me.
All right.
This is a special reinforced tower as well for our discussion and the Planning Commission, is it not, to, it has a special crumple factor?
Correct. It has a reinforced lower half so that in catastrophic event, it would buckle in the middle and fold over on itself rather than fall as a single unit.
The Planning Commission recommended that because some property to the east was in the fall zone, but you've since contacted that property owner and do you still have that letter or is it in this packet?
Should be in your packet, but yeah, I do have it here. So I contacted the adjacent owner, is Drake Development. Keith Icard is their managing member. I spoke with him on the phone. He didn't have an issue with the project. I asked if he would respond to an email stating such, which he did just before, actually the day of the Planning Commission meeting.
Yeah, this was heard twice. The first time, there was concern over the fall zone to the adjoining property and that tower has been redesigned.
Snaps in half, correct?
To address that.
So it's, it's a freestanding tower, no guy wires?
No guy wires, correct.
Okay.
Single foundation, freestanding tower.
And there's no other structures within 65 feet?
It's within the substation, so there's other substation structures, but no other residential or, no one else's structures.
Sure, good.
Okay. So ingress and egress were approved at the Planning Commission, off right-of-way parking. There's an existing drive and parking exits. They have refuse in service areas, utilities, screening and buffering, since it is electrified, that is not necessary. Signs, there's an existing sign and will add FCC signage. Required yards and open spaces are fine. General compatibility with adjacent properties will not adversely affect the public interest. So those were the conclusions of the Planning Commission. Any concerns there from the Board of Adjustment?
Right. So just to, something to clarify for everybody, this would fall under Article 25, which is in dire need of repair. The vast majority of Article 25 is written really for the large cell towers is kind of what it's geared towards. So Section 2526 Relief states, "Any applicant desired relief, waiver, exemption from any aspect or requirement of this ordinance may request such at the pre-application meeting, provided that the relief or exemption is contained in submitted application for conditional use," and it goes on. But we felt that the majority of this did not apply and we, we offered relief and then obviously looked at the fall zone and things that, that would be pertinent to this project.
Further questions for the applicant before public comment? All right, sir, you can sit down.
Thank you.
Open it up for public comment at this time. Would anyone like to make a public comment? All right, no comments? Public comment is closed. Further questions on the application? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the CUP for East River Electric for their tower. Further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Kettering?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Swenson?
Yes.
Clemmich?
Yes.
Los?
Yes. CUP is approved. Thank you for coming. I would entertain a motion to go back into regular session.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go back into regular session. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. We are now in regular session for item number 14, February 29th informational meeting update. So that meeting went very well. It was very well attended. I think almost every seat in here was filled. It was videotaped, so if you didn't make it, you're welcome to watch. It was about two hours. I think it was maybe just under two hours meeting on a very nice Saturday morning. So we had a lot of good discussion, a lot of back and forth with the audience to clarify data we were presenting and, and they offered some data back. A very respectful discussion. Would anyone else like to comment on, on the meeting?
Nothing other than I think it did go well. There was pretty genuine discussions and, and the tone was, was pleasant. It didn't get too, too crazy.
So I had promised to have the data that we went through on the website. So if you go out to the county's website and go to the commissioners, right below the packets option, there is now, I can't remember what it's called, township meeting or something. So if you click on that, all the documents we essentially presented at that meeting, the maps, all of the taxes, et cetera, the expenditures on roads are all listed there. So if you have a need to go through some data tonight when you get home, it is out there. So our plan is if we have more informational meetings, that is where we will post the data for you to reference. The laws are posted there as well, so.
I guess just a note on that, for people who were not there, I would encourage you to look at the packets. The, every citizen within the county ultimately, if this, if a petition were to be passed, it would go to a county vote and every citizen in the county would vote on that. So this doesn't just impact the five townships.
Thank you. Yes, that is, that is correct. So no other comments? We will move.
I, I think it's important and it did get touched on that, just like Joe said, if, if this happens and townships do leave, it's going to be a real tough decision. They'll have to either be a massive cut in services or a pretty significant raising of taxes to maintain services, so.
I would encourage people to look at the data first and judge for yourself on that. Next item, number 15, update of flood risk map review process. Dan and I attended the FEMA meeting along with Mr. Vedder, that they were giving an update on the flood mapping. So I just wanted to touch on it because some of the maps that were presented were fairly aggressive in, in expanding the area around especially Gayville, Mission Hill and such. And the maps, the copies of the maps around those specific towns were given to the towns themselves so they could understand how this could affect their growth and the need for flood insurance and et cetera. So I'm just going to kind of touch on some of the dates around this whole updating of flood plan mapping. So the, the whole process kicked off essentially in 2016 and so between 2016, 2018, they were gathering data, developing the data. And in September 2018, they released two-dimensional base flood elevation assessment maps. They used a lot of LiDAR data to do that. So back in February is when Dan, Gary and myself met at a flood risk review meeting. So what they are essentially saying is early 2021, there will be a preliminary. So what they are essentially saying is, early 2021, there will be a preliminary issuance of the flood insurance rate maps. There'll be another meeting following that. It'll be published in the newspaper. They'll have a 90-day comment period for appeals. So in late 2021, a letter of final determination will essentially be issued, followed by a six-month adoption period. So by the time everything's said and done, mid-2022 is when everything will be effective. But if you are building now, 2020, 2021 into 2022, where you're building will be subject to the maps released in 2022. So just be aware of that. There is a website I found helpful. It wasn't for our region, it's actually for Region 6, but it's RiskMap6, and that's the number 6.com. And they outline exactly what I just stated. So if you're curious about the whole process, Region 6, we are in Region 8, but Region 6, I thought, had probably the best presentation that I could understand anyway, so if you're curious on that. And I did on the Facebook page post a couple links, so you can actually go out and look at all of this as well for Region 8. Dan, did you have anything to add?
No. Mayor Jay Jorgensen is here. Did you want to say anything on this, Mr. Mayor? I just recognize the mayor of one of our wonderful communities, and really Gayville is probably the small community that's affected probably the most by this. It was pretty eye-opening to see that map, so.
Yep, and east of Yankton City proper as well. Yep, so.
No, and I think it's important, just like you said, that when people are coming in, as of right now, there's, it's not in a flood zone, but in all likelihood, in a few years, it will be. So that should really affect how you're building and what you're doing. And I believe, Gary, were we going to print out a map like that, or did we do anything like that?
We have a large-scale map that's available for people to look at on our wall upstairs if anybody's interested.
Is there a way we could maybe post something like that on the website? I know we got way too, probably a lot of information there, but they would come in to get a building permit from you anyway.
Yeah, we could certainly create a PDF that could be put out onto the website, but at the scale that it's at.
Probably wouldn't even be able to see anything.
It'd be tough, but.
But that's available at your office when people come in to get building permits.
Correct.
Thank you. So moving on to item 16, FEMA grant for Stone Church Bridge. And it is actually a FEMA grant for the road on there. It's in that area. So we have a resolution, and this is for a FEMA mitigation grant, if you will. So I don't know if anybody had a chance to read the application. We've been working with District 3, and essentially, if we are looking to try to replace Stone Church Bridge first as the first major James River Bridge, that road is often underwater because the James River seems to flood all the time these days. So the argument is, if you fix and put a brand-new bridge in, but the road is unusable, it kind of, you're not getting the biggest bang for your buck. So what this grant application is, to raise the road five feet. And they did check, they did all of the flood studies, and we are allowed to raise that. They did the study that most of the water still goes underneath the bridge, so that would not backwater upstream to the detriment of whatever criteria they use when they do their analysis. So this, they have estimated that the cost would be about $800,000 to do that. The feds would pick up 75%, the state 10%, and Yankton County would be responsible for 15%. So to couple this grant with a big grant for the bridge would make that a bridge and road that is usable during flood events. So that is what is before us today, is we are being asked to approve a resolution to have Paul Scherschlik be our appointed agent for this grant application process. So I will open it up for discussion.
There have been any, we looked into how this is going to affect, you know, structures such as example, a Stone Church Bridge, I'm sorry, Stone Church, the church itself? I mean, have we looked into, you know, and there are other structures up in that area? Is there some type of study we could do to see? Because I know on my farm, where when they built up Highway 46 and 81, they said, "It's not going to back up water." Yeah, it did significantly, because when you have water a mile across and only one bridge for it to go under, it definitely raises the level quite significantly. So I guess, I think this is a good thing, but I think we need to see how it's going to affect the people up there, because, you know, there's a house, there's a few structures up there that could have a significant effect on these people's homes that they live in. And I don't know how we do that. Would that be a separate study?
I can't ask, or I can't answer what they looked at when they got, when they did their analysis for what would be affected. I can't answer if they checked Bob's house and Sally's house and the church. I'm assuming that's part of the criteria for the flood study, is that they check where the elevations would be, the new elevations.
Do you know, Mike, what they did for, to study those?
Question I had for Adam. What I got out of his explanation was that realistically, it should not change whether, like this year with the, this was a 100-year flood event, you know, this last year, it would be the same with the grade rates.
Well, it'll be five foot higher. I mean, if it's built up five foot.
Flow is supposed to be the same.
It was supposed to be the same on Highway 81 and 46, and it's not. I guess I, I think this is a good thing, but I know when I went up and talked to those individuals up in that area, they, actually, the majority, and Joe, you were there, didn't want to raise this road because of the fear that it might cause some flooding, so. Before we approve it, I think it might be a good idea to call some of these individuals and get their opinion, because there are homes that could literally be significantly affected by this. Definitely Stone Church will be affected by this.
We do have a deadline of March 13th for the application. So essentially, it floods at 16 feet? Mike, is that right? The Scotland, about 16 feet? It goes over the road? I think it's about 16 feet. So that would push it to 21 feet before it would go over the road.
And Stone...
And we were, we'd max out at 26 there this year. Those are supposed to be burned in our head, because March 13th is coming around.
You know, I'm just looking on the map, yeah, I mean, the clouts, they live right along the river there. And then how is this going to impact further upstream, you know, going into, you know, other counties as well? I mean, this will push the water back, that'll raise it five feet, and then those river valleys, you know, five feet could back it up for miles.
About 16 and a half feet is where it goes over the road.
And I'm wondering if something, something to the effect with some culverts or some other types of things to allow that flow to go through, if that would, if that would help?
The challenge, and I did ask about that, about putting culverts in, because the river bends back, but in order for culverts to work, you have to have a pretty good head pressure to get it through, and it didn't, they didn't find it to be a plausible fix for what I was asking them for.
You know, when this road is built up, it basically becomes a, you know, almost a mile-long dam, and that'll backwater up. I mean, we saw it this year with 81, we saw it with 46, we saw it with those, and, you know, it just, there's a potential there that I would like to see, you know, some sort of overlay, okay, if we're going to back up water five foot higher in this area, what is the cause? Because I know when you're dealing with watersheds, and particularly the James River like this, you really got to take a holistic approach on, it may affect this area, but what other area does it affect? We certainly don't want to cause problems for some of Hutchinson County roads if we raise this one up, which really we could do. Right now, it floods at 16 foot, it goes over, and that water doesn't back up, but raising it five foot more is going to cause water to back up. Where? I can't say at this point, but.
So if we aren't going to have the buildup, we want to have the bridge, the road buildup.
I'm not against the road buildup. I just want to know what is the secondary effect of the road buildup? And, you know, for every action we do, you know, there's unintended, you know, consequences, and the people who live there, I wish Kemp was here, Metler was here, he could tell us what, you know, he's grown up that whole area. They know what the consequences are for that. I can't say without some overlay or some, some study telling us what raising that level five more foot is going to do.
Just to throw something on the table, back in the 70s when I was in Kansas, there was a similar situation where they had to raise it up five or six feet, caused the same problem, it made a dam, but they installed a spillway overflow not too far from the new bridge. So that took care of the backing up problem. I mean, I'm not suggesting that, but it was just something that I was familiar with.
Okay, so here's something from the engineer who did the study. "We obtained a copy of FEMA's effective flood model for the James River in Yankton County. This model was used as the basis for evaluation of a grade raise. This model contains scenarios for 2, 10, 50, and 100-year flood events. We added a 25-year event scenario using USGS gauging station data for the Scotland gauge, since this will be the design event for the bridge."
This is 25-year event? Is the design model?
For the bridge. FEMA's flood model assumes flow over the road top is ineffective, not effective as a conveyance of water, and all effective flow goes under the bridge. Thus, it is possible to raise the grade north of the bridge without causing an increase in 100-year flood elevations according to FEMA standards." So that is from the engineer.
I'm not an engineer, but I know the last few years that we've had, all the models of this are broken. I don't know what would we have called last year, a 500-year flood? And we've had 100-year, we've probably had four, 500-year floods in the last few years on this river, and I don't know, I'm apprehensive about this. I'd like to talk to some of the neighbors. I could give Jody Clout a call and get some input on that, but I think it's a good idea, but I'm just, I'm not, I'm not sure on the negative consequences.
If we get this grant and don't have funding, no one's going to make us do it, right? Or are we locked in?
Paul, can you comment on that?
There's nothing that states that you have to take, unless you, if it's awarded, there's nothing that states you have to take it. It would be my recommendation that you go ahead with this resolution, and if something would change in the next couple of weeks, you could have it withdrawn. But if you don't make the 13th deadline, you're not, you're not waiting for the next disaster to happen.
Yep. So this is our one shot. Further discussion?
Did we have a motion on this?
Nope, we don't. We've been discussing this whole time, so.
I guess, are you ready for a motion?
Yes.
I move approval of the resolution on the condition that before we raise the road, we conduct a study to look at the effects of the area.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution to appoint applicant agent based on doing a study for effects on the areas upstream. I didn't say it exactly how you did, Dan, but Patty's got it.
Prior to going ahead with building, we need to know what the potential effects are.
Further discussion? Roll call vote.
Clemmish?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Swenson?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Los?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Paul, you are in charge.
As always, Paul.
Item 17, county meeting schedule.
Can I show my picture?
Yes, sir.
Can you get a picture of this with, so the people at home can see it? These are some pictures that I took yesterday. This is a bridge, I was hoping Clark Engineering was still here, but they're not. The bridge that was built in 88 that takes the water away from the spillway that's fallen apart, this is within sight about a half a mile from it. It's directly south of Marindale Dam, and I took these pictures yesterday on my way out to the farm, and the bridge was built in 1939, and it's probably, if not one of the, or if, might be the oldest bridge in Yankton County. And there's about 78 or 80 bridges that the county maintains. I also contacted Auditor Patty Hoyam yesterday and asked her, "How many commissioners have been on the commission since 1939?" And Patty replied that there have always been five commissioners for, every year for the last 80-plus years. Like I said, the location of this bridge is just south of Marindale Dam that was built, Marindale Dam was built by the state of South Dakota in the mid-'50s, and the street is 301 and 447 Avenue. So for almost 81 years, it's, it's been kicked down the road for a long time, and please don't expect any miracles out of the current commission, but I did send this to Washington, DC this morning with several other pictures to my contact there that I've been in contact ever since I was out there in, last year in September. And I'm hoping it's a pity party or guilt trip that we got a bridge from '39, but I wish we could reincarnate the guys that built this to build some bridges nowadays. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clemmish?
Yeah, okay, the county meeting schedule, I kind of been looking forward, and if you notice, this month, March, June, September, and December, there are all five Tuesdays in that month, which means conditional use permits, any zoning and changes, all of that stuff, it's going to take significantly longer because we're going to have three weeks breaks. And then also, you know, based on what's happened the last year, when we go three weeks without a meeting, our agenda is usually like three pages long or something. Doing some research on how other counties operate, Beetle County, Brown County, Cottington, Davison, Minnehaha, Roberts, Turner, and Tripp County all meet once a week, and then in addition to that, Clay County meets the third, fourth, and last, Lincoln meets the first, second, and fourth, and Union meets every two weeks. I just, you know, I don't need an answer today, but I think we need to maybe consider meeting maybe a little more often, at least on those few months where we have that three-week span between meetings. Just, you know, for economic growth's sake, people going through a CUP, they go through the Planning Commission, it gets approved, they can't get on the next meeting because it's not 10-day notice, then they have to wait. because it's not ten-day notice, then they have to wait three or four weeks. It's a long process during those months because of the five Tuesdays. So I just wanted to bring that out, and if there's any thoughts on that. Considering similar-sized counties, all similar-sized counties, with the exception of Hughes that has a county manager, Brookings that has a county manager, they all meet more often than we do. And even some smaller counties like Roberts, Turner, and Tripp all meet a little more often, so...
Other comments from the commissioners? All right, we'll give it food for thought.
Okay.
Item eighteen, resolution for opposition to Senate Bill one-five-seven.
Sure, I have this, I wrote up this resolution, and I had some public comment and some emails and some phone calls, which caused me to rewrite this. So, and that's the point, that's the reason that we post these things in a packet, is so that we can get public input from people. So actually, the resolution I have, and I'll read, is different than the one posted in the packet, based on the comments that I got. And I can read that right now if you'd like.
Please.
All right. Resolution in opposition to Senate Bill one-fifty-seven. Whereas elected officials in the counties are closest to its citizens, are more invested in the success of the community, and are best suited to make important decisions about its operation, zoning, and governance. Whereas the Board of Adjustment voting requirements should be determined by local voters and not mandated by state government. Whereas local elected officials have an obligation to protect the safety, health, and welfare of their entire communities. And whereas Senate Bill one-fifty-seven may negatively impact those affected by a project by inhibiting their ability to appeal decisions and force financial hardships by imposing attorney fees and court costs. Now therefore, it be resolved that we, Yankton Board of County Commissioners, do hereby resolve that we oppose Senate Bill one-fifty-seven. And this is just my words, but I really feel that this bill, it takes away some of the county's rights. Our voters decided when they pass zoning, they wanted a supermajority requirement. They wanted four out of five votes. It's in our zoning ordinance in Article seventeen. And if this does pass, that's more zoning ordinance changes that we're gonna make.
Discussion by the commissioners.
Are you gonna go to a public comment, or to...
Yeah, we will, and it's a resolution.
I have some comments after.
Do you wanna wait?
Yes.
Okay, public comment, please. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna say that I support opposing SB one-fifty-seven. And I would like to see a show of hands in the audience of people who oppose SB one-fifty-seven.
That's it. Thank you. Further comment? All right, back to the board for comment.
Okay, I have some comments. It's kind of based on what I got in the packet, Dan.
Yeah, you know, and I think it's good because we put it in the packet, and that the reason is, is that, you know, people should contact us. And it caused me to reconsider this, and then so I wrote it into what we have here today.
Let me go through my comments.
Sure.
Bill one-fifty-seven is tagged as a bill to cut red tape, improving the county zoning and appeal processes. I will not be voting in favor of the proposed resolution, and I want to explain my position. I totally respect the right of Dan to propose this resolution and respect his opinions represented in the resolution. However, I do not believe that the proposed bill will undermine the ability of Yankton County citizens to make local decisions. The bill does not change the right of citizens to change their local zoning ordinances. It will provide a more clear path for citizens to determine actions that may take, they may want to take, without fear of repeated and extended lawsuits. CAFOs are not the only enterprise that will be impacted by this bill. Wind energy, solar energy are examples of enterprises that could also be impacted. There are many other examples of economic development projects that will be affected. We as citizens of the county cannot assume that the DNR could not be staffed and equipped to monitor producers. There is limited any evidence that this bill would create environmental damage. This is a job of our legislators. The bill promotes a process that will shorten the decision-making time for citizens to make economic decisions. It will reduce the timeframes for legal processes, which should reduce legal expenses for all parties. The bill promotes local control by working with a majority vote rather than a vote of a few. Lastly, I ask, what is the purpose of the resolution? It may impact some legislators to not support the bill, but there's a large number of organizations, and I'll name them, that are proponents of the bill. The South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, the South Dakota Pork Producers, the South Dakota Cattlemen's Association, the South Dakota Farm Bureau Federation, the South Dakota Soybean Association, South Dakota Realtors Association, South Dakota Bankers Association, East River Electric, South Dakota Corn Growers Association, South Dakota Electric Utility Companies, Nexter Energy Sources, the South Dakota Chamber of Commerce, Independent Community Bankers of South Dakota, the South Dakota Ethanol Producers, South Dakota Wind Energy Association, Sioux Falls Chamber, Yankton Area Chamber, South Dakota Pork Producers, and the Department of Environmental and Natural Resources. There are some opponents that also of the bill. I'm not talking about individuals, I'm talking about organizations. The Sierra Club, the Dakota Rural Action, Yankton Sioux Tribe, South Dakota Stock growers Association, and the South Dakota Division of the Isaac Walton Lake. It appears to me that the resolution will only create more adversity and disfavor of these organizations and the state government departments. I suggest that we allow our elected representatives to do their job, and we as citizens of the county talk directly to them.
Thank you. Further comments?
I think we forgot something. We always forget about the people watching at home. I counted about fourteen hands that were raised. Is that what you guys counted?
You guys wanna put your hands up again?
Yeah.
More than that.
Thank you.
Even more than that. I think it's seventeen, I think I counted just that. So I'd have to agree with Chairman, Commissioner Clemmish, a quote from General MacArthur, that's just part of it, paraphrase, one size doesn't fit all. And somebody that's that far away in peer, might live on a ranch, we live on a farm. Like I said, one size doesn't fit all, so...
You know, and as county commissioners, we're responsible for protecting the safety, health, and welfare of everyone in our community. We're not, you know, we protect organizations too, but we can't forget about the citizens of our community. And there is a potential negative effect of what happens. I mean, local control, it's like democracy and freedom itself. It's not perfect, but it's better than any alternative. And, you know, when I served overseas in Korea and Iraq, there was not a lot of red tape. You go in and you give the sheet some money, and you can do whatever you want. And there's, you know, no freedom for people. So, I mean, this is still America. And to me, this is about freedom for the citizens in our community. And it's a slippery slope. If the state is gonna start taking authority here, next year it's gonna be somewhere else, and next year it's gonna be somewhere else.
I think the only authority that they're taking is trying to move the legal process along.
Well, I mean, and it's taken, the voters of Yankton, when they voted in our zoning ordinance, said, we want four out of five for a supermajority. Now, that's what they decided. None of our citizens have come up and demanded that it go to three. And with this bill, it goes to a simple majority of those who are present. So there's been a lot of commission meetings we've had where there's been three commissioners. And hypothetically, a minority of the board could either approve or disapprove a conditional use permit if that changes. So I'm not in a, if a county wants to change these rules, that should be on them. I'm just against the state mandating us to change. I don't like that.
Further comment?
I listened to all the testimony given at the state level, in the State Affairs Committee and on the Senate floor. And the last I looked, it has not been scheduled for the House State Affairs hearing yet. But as soon as the bill came out, obviously, I went out and looked at it. And I spent six sheets of paper with my comments on every change they were making. Some of the changes I'm okay with. If you listen to the testimony, and I think it was, it would have been in the House or the Senate State Affairs Committee, one of the proponents was arguing, and I couldn't catch where they were from. But they were arguing about the special permitted uses. And essentially, what that county was, and it's exactly what Turner County does today, is they have the smaller CUPs, don't require, I shouldn't say, let me restate that. The smaller animal feeding operations under their ordinance don't require a CUP, but they place setbacks and they require a manure management plan. So what they're doing is they're calling those special permitted uses. And that's in court right now, because state law does not allow you to do that. So one of the incorporations in this bill was to allow counties the authority to do that. I lobbied very hard against the voting. Craig Kennedy got up and spoke very well in the State Affairs hearing. He spoke very well on the floor of the Senate. He gave a specific example of farmers who brought a lawsuit against an open pit mine in Hutchinson County. The farmers brought the lawsuit to prevent a CUP from being given, and they won. And he says, you know, under this bill, they could not have done that. So it's, you have to remember, and I told him, and I spoke to Gina Hunhoff, I spoke to someone in the governor's office, and the secretary of the DNR. And I argued the point about the voting. The voting probably is the biggest change about all of this bill to me. And to Dan's point of two people sitting in front of you can approve a CUP. That was tried, they tried to amend the bill on the Senate floor. Susan Wismer, from Brown County, I think, tried to get the amendment passed, and they would not amend it. And her argument was exactly, two out of five can essentially approve a CUP. And she wanted to simply remove of the members present. She said, fine, make it a majority, but at least it'd be three out of five instead of two out of five. And the amendment failed. So the process, for me, that I went through is, the process we should all be going through, is to go directly to the people making the decision. I hesitate to pass another resolution. We just passed a resolution on local control. And during the discussion, the question was asked, is this resolution about SB one-five-seven? And the answer was no. And we are here two weeks later with a second resolution specifically for SB one-five-seven. So I caution getting into the habit of passing resolutions for or against specific bills, because there's a lot of bills I lobbied for and a lot I lobbied against. But I didn't feel it was right to bring it before the commission and pass a resolution on every bill I felt was good or bad for the county. So while I agree, I think the second version is very well-written, I hesitate to pass it in front of this commission.
And I think most bills don't, you know, while they may deal with counties, they don't go and overreach as this one does, you know, requiring the Board of Adjustment voting decisions. And going from a simple majority of those present, but then at the same time, requiring the full board to overturn a zoning administrative decision. You know, if an individual county wants to do any of those, I'm fine with it. But I just have an issue with getting mandated by state government. And when we did the local control, I don't believe one-fifty-seven, any information on that had been released at that point.
If there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I move approval of the resolution in opposition to Senate Bill one-fifty-seven.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution as resubmitted, not the resolution that was posted on the website. Further discussion? Roll call vote.
Clemmish?
Yes.
Swenson?
Yes.
Kettering?
No.
Healy?
Yes.
Wos?
No. Resolution is adopted. It is now time for public comment. Yes, sir, come forward.
Louis Godson, Volin.
Can I sign it?
Uh, I realize that you handed or had a petition out for two acres anywhere and a half a mile setback.
This way.
I put up a Class F, two-hundred-and-forty-animal-unit nursery in two thousand seventeen. It was tied up in court for seventeen months. And there was about ten months of no income, ten months of interest that got paid every month, and one hell of a lawyer bill. And it was held up by a group of people that's gonna save whatever. I have a seventy-five-foot setback with a Class F, the way it was set up. The closest neighbor was thirteen-hundred-and-forty feet away. So I think I got the seventy-five-foot setback covered really well. But yet, I got sued by thirty-three people, and the closest one was two and a quarter miles away. So that half-mile thing isn't gonna do any good. You better set it at six-eight-hundred miles. The other thing you gotta remember is John Morrell's harvest, fifteen thousand head of hogs a day. I don't expect Yankton County to raise them. If Yankton County and nine other counties went together, Yankton County would only have to come up with fifteen hundred hogs, and we could let them run. But that's every day. By the time you get enough pigs for them to run for six months, you're gonna have a hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-thousand head of hogs running around in open pens and draining into the rivers. The CAFOs that went up, the finishing units, is enough to supply John Morrell. If every pig was ready the same day, they could run damn near two days. And then they'd have to wait another six months till the next batch gets ready. This idea that we can go back to nineteen fifty, if everybody is willing to go back to taking a bath in a wash tub, shutting off the air conditioner, get rid of the central heat, and use a cook stove and an oil burner, maybe. I raised pigs the old way, we're raising them the confinement way that everybody hates. It is unreal how fast those hogs grow, how comfortable they are, and how little medicine they get. A two-hundred-and-fifty cc bottle of antibiotic was enough to go through, and I gotta check with my son, but I think it lasted through ten thousand head of hogs. And once you give a pig a shot, it goes in a separate pen, and it stays with the other ones that had shots, and the rest of them are programmed hogs that are drug-freeze. And they stay that way, clear through. I think we better worry about how tight we get on livestock production. The money it brings in is unreal. It would be, it would be the same if they said, okay, no more twelve-row planters, you gotta go back to a two-row planter, check it, cultivate it, and walk the corn. How many people do you think would farm? How many people do you think would farm?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? All right, public comment is closed. Commissioner Updates, item number 20.
You want me to start it?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I've been contacted by some of our schools, and they want to bring some middle schoolers or elementary school, possibly, to the government center, just to kind of see the offices. I, I was going to ask the commission, does anybody have any issue with that, you're just showing them the department's? I think it's a good, and what the teacher said, I think these are government teachers, is, you know, local government has really more of an impact on the daily life. And so they wanted to come in, see where to register to vote, see where you pay your taxes and DMV, and then we might do a display with the ambulance and possibly a sheriff's car if, if the sheriff wants to do that. I already talked with Steve, and he would all, all for it. Just kind of show these kids what the county has to offer. If nobody has any issue with that, I'll set it up. I don't have a date on when that's going to be, and I'll check with all the department's heads, but.
Okay, fine.
Okay. March 16th, I'm doing a listening session in Utica before the Utica Town Meeting, if anybody else wants to go. It's going to start at 6 o'clock PM, and that, it's the old school building in Utica, so I don't know if anybody has that, but March 16th was the day.
Is that the one we were going to do together?
Yes, I got it set up, if you're able to make it. That was really the only day that they're, they were able to do that, because they're having their meeting afterwards, so. And if you're not busy on the 17th, you can come cheer Joe Healy, myself, and Nancy on at the Rockathon at the Senior Center on St. Patty's Day. Thank you.
Gary, I haven't heard if you can make it. There's going to be a town hall meeting at the lake Tuesday.
Do you change the date?
Yep. Does that work for you still?
Will work.
Okay.
Can it, can it, the date again is what?
Tuesday, the 10th, at 6:30 PM. Geared towards the lake area people, that it'll be held at the Lewis and Clark, I don't know what you call it.
Recreation.
Recreational area.
It's where they vote up there.
It's not the lodge, it's the, the voting center out there, the main office for the state park. We'll be hosting it out there. 6:30.
Keep them updated on that. The three of us are going?
It'd just be you and I.
Oh, just you and I?
Yep.
You said 6:30?
Correct.
Okay. Don, do you have anything?
No.
Gary?
No, just what I said before, I, I sent pictures and, and these, and then also some other ones with my contact in Washington DC this morning, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Keep praying.
So we'll get those two meetings advertised in the paper? Yeah, that's good.
Yep.
Also, for the other commissioners' knowledge, there's, was no applications for the Planning Commission, so is that correct? We're not going to have a Planning Commission meeting in April?
Correct.
Okay. And I didn't get this officially on the agenda, but we did have an ambulance task force meeting last night, probably our last one. We felt we closed everything down pretty good, we started putting our recommendations together, and now we're going to kind of work through email to finalize how we want to prioritize and present those. So I'm not sure if a formal report will be at our next commission meeting, or if it will be the first April commission meeting. But we had really good participation from the audience, and certainly the gentleman who had run ambulance districts before was of great service to our discussions on that, so.
I have one more.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sherry, I, I got this resource directory, I don't know if, maybe you all have it, but it, it basically describes all the economic programs that the state offers, both the state, and if there's grants, maybe we could order one for every, for economic development.
Where'd you get that at?
Office of Government.
You've got connections.
Office of Economic Development.
All right, thank you. I might take a look at that if you get, if I could borrow from you sometime.
All right, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for litigation pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law 1-22-2 sub 3.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried, we are in executive session.
Yeah, I was wondering that.
Might be just a loose wire, maybe?
Because it didn't seem like he, because John was here.
He didn't look concerned, did he?
He knew it wasn't his, his stuff, so maybe it was there, because after, you know, they kept shaking that, or, or then it went on, so.
Because we had the same issue with Mr. Bollman, he was trying to show us something too, so.
There's a, there's an issue with that, he's going to fix.
Don, do you want to turn your microphone on? Thank you. All right, I entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to come out of executive session, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries, we are out of executive session. There, there will be no action taken as a result of the executive session. Items for next meeting.
I would just ask that everybody look at the calendar and see all the days that we have, five Tuesdays where there's going to be big gaps in where we're meeting, and just look at, look at that, and possibly we could do some things to move that along. It's, especially if, if we're doing the zoning ordinance changes, it's going to be a real hindrance, because we're going to, you know, it'll take basically six weeks to move them through with those big gaps, so that's all I have.
Anything else?
Daily savings time is coming up this weekend.
Ah, yes, good reminder. All right, I would.
Did we give?
Legislation to get rid of that.
Easter, did we ever approve that Easter for the county employees?
Good Friday, that'll be on the next agenda.
Okay, all right.
All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn.
Second.
I have.
Aye.
Who did it?
Don can have credit for it.
Who was faster?
Don and Gary.
Don and Gary.
That's okay.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries, we are adjourned.